Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, September 18th, 2019, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilwoman Rizicky for a moment of silence. Before we start that, we lost a very great lady, Gail Marath, a couple of weeks ago before the storm, and she was a great ally to our city and to the environment. So please keep her and her family in your prayers.
You'll bow your head for a moment of silence? And the pledge of the Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, open up for citizens' comments, and this will be for non-agenda items, for items that are not on the agenda.
Hello, Diane Douglas. Okay, let's see which one first. A neighbor mentioned to me they were worried about cruise ships dumping sewage in the ocean because of the brown sludge that's nondescript floating around these days. So I'm just wondering, does anybody remember, and I can't remember, if I heard that the port has the cruise ships having their own sewage treatment plant?
I don't know.
And if, since we don't know, if anybody gets in that situation with talking up there that you could mention that this is a great idea for the cruise ships to have their own sewage treatment plant? That's just one comment. Okay. And then the testing of the ocean quality. Now, I know the Rock County tests for certain, I don't know whatever it is they test for, but I was reading a book, and it says if you have two different chemicals, they come together and make a new chemical. So I didn't know if the new chemicals were being tested for. So I don't know if we could expand the quality, the water quality testing, if it's mentioned. So I'm just planting seeds here, that one poison, if you only test for this poison, that's all you're going to find, and if it's not there. But if that poison had mixed with another poison, we get a new poison, and if you don't look for that, you're not going to find it. So I didn't know if we could broaden, encompass a larger amount. So I don't know. Just putting that out there, too. So just in case anybody's in a position where they're like, "Oh, hey, somebody said." That would be, "I said it." Okay. But that's from a book. All right. Yeah, written a long time ago, and I have a reason for, and it's all about Okeechobee, washing it up, and 50 years of insecticides, poisons, herbicides, all that stuff. And the coquina rock. I just saw a few days ago, somebody just carrying piles of rock off the beach. Now, I was looking at our website, and that coquina rock art is still on the city website, if we could get that off of there. And if we could put in the Beachcaster that it is illegal according to CCL, statute 161.053, to take coquina rock off the beach. So if we could put it in the Beachcaster or any other publication, you were talking about the other newspaper that is very Satellite Beach friendly. Yeah. I think that's about it. Yeah, because I mentioned it was illegal to them, and he said, "I asked an officer, and he said it was fine." Of course, he just said that. But people are just taking it off in broad daylight, piles of, you know, the bucket's full. So, yeah, all right. And then I think the art's still up there, and I did talk to Nick, and I said, "Let's, since it's still there, let's take it and put it back on the beach and make a big deal about it for the ORB Festival in December." So, and the reason why I'm on this about the coquina rock is because the coquina rock, if you do any reading about it, this is a very special reef we have out there. It doesn't happen. There's only a few coquina rock reefs in the world, and we are the only place in the world that has fossilized crabs anywhere. So, all right. Well, that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you for your time and energy you put up here. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And those rocks are called ghost crabs.
Oh, those are business. Yeah.
Any further public comment or citizens' comments before I close it? Thank you for your comments. Closed citizens' comments, council comments. Council doesn't mind, I'll start. First, Courtney, to thank you very much and the employees of the city. Every so often, we go through this hurricane preparation, and this one was really a pretty scary event. And I got to say, the employees of our city are pretty fabulous, all the crew and the people, and the energy that they put out during those three or four days was amazing, helping fill sandbags, you name it, delivering sandbags to people's houses. We got some pretty nice letters back. I don't think that happens in a lot of cities. And to Courtney, to your staff, Al, everybody, incredible job by our employees, and thank you very, very much for everything you do.
Yes, you do. That's embarrassing.
Does that really produce anyone?
So, we know how brave Courtney can be, to stand next to me, but when people outside of your town continually awards Courtney for his incredible job she does, and this was an award she just got from the fire chapter of American Planning Association, is presented to Courtney Barker, AICP Satellite Beach for being the outstanding public official for 2019. So, great job. We knew about it in, we got it, we knew about it in last month, but we were not allowed the same thing about it until she actually received it last week. So, great job again. Thank you very much.
Courtney, that's all I have.
Sure. Couple of things. After Dorian was done, the city very quickly joined with some other cities and groups to have a Bahamas Relief Drive, which was just kudos to everybody who organized it, who volunteered, the community who donated. I think we filled up a 20-foot U-Haul truck, over 10,000 items donated, which is amazing. It was, you know, two days after the storm, and everybody was here donating those things. And I think part of it was because they knew, like, if it was coming to the city, it was going to go, like, to the right place. Like, they felt good about bringing it here, knowing that it would, you know, get to the right people in the Bahamas. So that was wonderful. Last Wednesday, I had the honor of attending the Patriot Day ceremony that we had here. It was a beautiful ceremony, very respectful, all of the speakers, very well done, and I hope that's a new, I don't know if this was the first time, but I hope that's a new tradition.
Second year.
Second year. Okay. So I hope it continues. And then finally, we are still accepting applications for our youth council. So if you know any high school teens that would be interested in learning more about our city, the deadline's next Friday, the 27th, and you can get the application online. So talk it up for us. We hope to get lots of the applications for that.
Thank you.
Just to kind of follow up on your comments, Mr. Mayor, it was, it's really interesting, as you know, to stay from one of these hurricanes. And it always pays off to see what goes on. I mean, especially want to thank the Fire Department, the Police Department, and Public Works. In particular, as our chief back there will tell you, we had another fire and another hurricane. So it's good you guys stuck around again. It was, I know it was a small one, but it just goes to show you that, glad you guys are here. The other one was, I was riding with the police chief on A-1A, and we're doing this speed, you know, 45 miles an hour, and all of a sudden, this car goes past us between 90 and 100 miles an hour. That was his estimate. And he had to go up to 100 to catch up to the guy by the end of Satellite Beach City limits. Of course, he was arrested and all that sort of thing, and, but you just see some things going on. So, like the chief said, he either kept that guy from killing himself because he was headed for Air Force Base, which he would have gone well over 100 at that point, or he kept him from killing somebody else. So it's just kind of nice to see our police and fire departments stay, because it is, every time it has paid off, and Public Works stays all the time, too. They're out running around on the streets. So from a taxpayer standpoint, you're definitely getting your money's worth. These people are working and not only putting out fires, but probably saving the lives of some people driving like they shouldn't or from killing somebody else. The last thing I have, Mr. Mayor, this kind of goes towards the fire chief. I got contacted on the 13th by the Senior Resource Alliance over in Orlando, and they asked if I could come over to our meeting on the 16th, which I could not, and I'm sure that's sort of, but it was, the meeting was being held by Antonia Norvello, who's a physician. I think, I think her training is, I caught it, was, she's a neurologist, but she was the former U.S. Surgeon General, and I believe she was appointed under the Obama administration. So she wanted to know some detail on fall prevention and the activities and all that sort of thing. So, and she also wanted to talk about violence against seniors. But I did take the first part of the meeting, because I had to attend it by conference call, I couldn't physically be there with everybody else because of my work assignments on short notice. But I think I did justice by it. I mean, I just got an email from the Senior Resource Alliance thanking for the phone attendance and that sort of thing. So, I don't know where it's going. She represents a group that has physicians from around the United States, from California and, I guess California's part of the United States. But anyhow, you may hear something, you may not, but I told them what we've been doing with, with fire, and, not with fire, with wrecked and all that sort of thing. So, I don't know, Cassie, they may reach out to you, too. I don't know. But anyhow, everything's out there, and we'll see where it goes. Sometimes these things go nowhere, but other times, at least we were on their radar screen. So, yep, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. One quick question concerning that chase.
Yeah.
Did you see much of it?
I was in the back, slumped down, going like this.
That's what I heard. Okay. I just wanted to make, I heard, I just wanted, I'm sorry.
Want to know something that was really interesting is that the police chief went up to that car by himself with no backup to see what was going on with those guys. And it was, that was pretty scary, because I was in the backseat. I couldn't see anything other than just between the seats, but I didn't know what was going to happen if they were, if they were armed or anything like that. It was pretty, pretty scary, but, no, I ducked the entire time.
I heard that. Sure.
And went home, and changed my clothes.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure we knew the whole.
You got the whole, even that last part is true.
Okay. Anything else from the council? Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, City Attorney's Report.
Of nothing.
Thank you. On to Item 6, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, September 21st, we will be helping with the Florida Coastal Beach Cleanup, and that will take place at Pelican Beach Park from 8:00 to 12:00. And this is an event sponsored by the Ocean Conservancy and Keep Revarre Beautiful. And again, as usual, the volunteers will be provided with trash bags, gloves, data cards, pencils, and sunscreen. And if you want to volunteer, you can just show up, or, you know, you can call City Hall, and we'll put you in touch with the right people for more information. On Sunday, October 6th, the PAL Lions Club Pancake Breakfast will be at the Civic Center right under here from 8:00 till noon, and tickets are $5 per person and can be purchased in advance at the PAL office, the Satellite Beach Rec Department, or from a Lions Club member, or you can just show up at the day and just buy the ticket at the door. I wanted to let you know that we've gotten two emails or thank you cards. One's from Joyce Burnett, thanking the Public Works staff Brad Alum and John Herr for delivering sandbags to her home. And then we also received a thank you card from Carolyn and Bill Abshire, thanking the Fire Department for all they do for the community. And then, before I get to the update on the hurricane, I wanted to give you, Mike McGary will be here on October 2nd to give you a very detailed update on the, on the Mid-Reach Project. I did speak with his boss, which is Virginia Barker, Director of Natural Resources, and we agreed that closer to the project's start date, we will be having a town hall meeting to inform the residents exactly how that project is going to be constructed and so on. And just to give you a quick update, in case you're probably going to start getting questions considering how the beach is looking right now, but that the U.S. Army Corps has bid the Mid-Reach Project along with the South Reach, which is in the Atlantic, and Patrick Air Force Base last month. They have bids in hand, and Mike has gotten a nod that the apparent low bid should be okay, although they have not announced the results because of the hurricane. Like everyone else, you know, the hurricane delayed everyone by a week and a half. The Mid-Reach Project is expected to be built between November 15th and May 7th of 2020. And the primary sand source will be offshore sand dredged from Canaveral Shoals, the same sand used for Cocoa Beach in the Atlantic for the last decade. It will be stockpiled on the beach on vacant area between Spessard Island North and Spessard Island South and moved to Mid-Reach by truck and placed as had been done before. So it'll be delivered very similar, but the source is different. It would be dredged right from the ocean. The truck transport is very important because that's how it's minimizing the impact to the worm rock. The project will be very similar to the previous dune projects, only slightly larger. It is modest in scale to minimize the rock burial, and the county is currently working to potentially increase the project volume to account for the Dorian losses, but that still remains to be determined whether we're able to do that on time. So that's a quick update. He will be here to answer your detailed questions on October 2nd. And I'm going to go ahead and give you the hurricane presentation. So, as you recall, we, when we started, you know, ramping up for the hurricane, you can go to the next. This was like the longest hurricane in the face of, in the history. We are getting notified of hurricanes so far in advance now. I think the public is like us, you know, where it takes, it's almost like a two-week event now. But this one just kept dragging on. We first expected it to hit us at a 5 on a Saturday, and then it ended up barely hitting us at all, you know, by Wednesday. So, but we had to prepare like it was hitting us. And I think that expectation, it's interesting because what, what, how we worked with the EOC, because we went through Matthew and Irma, was really seamless. It was very, very well done. We didn't have any surprises, except for a couple with other, you know, agencies, but with the EOC, it was very well done. And we had, you know, some expectations that it was going to be a 5. And in those expectations, you know, we planned for the worst. And so then, coming off and, you know, being able to get to a barely noticeable hurricane, you know, we considered ourselves very lucky. And I think, like what you said, I think the community very much felt that way, too. And I think that's why the drive to donate to the Bahamas was such a big deal to a lot of people. You can go to the next one. We started doing the sandbags very early, and you can see most of the staff helped with us. So Lexi was out there for most of the time. I had to force her to take a break. And then you could see Detective Baloo is out there as well. You can go to the next one. This is our new building inspector, Andy, who used to be at Public Works, so he's already moved over to the Building Department, but that was his birthday. And so that's the joke, is that he was partying with the birthday dirt. And it was a dirty job. I posted this to Facebook, and it was a very popular post. This, the public really likes to see the staff and, you know, and they, the Public Works Department was no less popular than anyone else. And so when they see that we're boarding up, that's, that's when they know, I think, oh, okay, you know, maybe we should start looking at evacuating. Go ahead. And, you know, seeing the fire departments and the police departments ready to respond and then was a big deal. I got a lot of comments from people that they saw so much police out there that they knew that they could leave, and they felt that their homes were going to be safe. And that's why we do that. So we're not expecting to see a lot of crime, but we want to make sure the community knows that we're going to, we're going to be there to protect their property, and so they feel comfortable enough to evacuate. And also seeing the staff, we feed the staff, you know, throughout the hurricane, and this, you know, provides a nice break for them. And then also, you know, it's hard to be, a lot of the Public Works Department was out clearing drains in the middle of the rain and stuff like that. And so when you're doing that all night, and, you know, police and fire are doing the same thing, the last thing you want to eat is a cold sandwich and chips, you know, so we have hot meals for them the whole time. I don't know how Amber got the dog to sit on the table, but she's really good at that, I guess. But this, this is our police department changing shifts, so all of them are there. You can go to the next one. This is our smiling Public Works Department. I get comments about him all the time about how pleasant he is. And so, you know, when the residents start seeing the impacts to the beach, unfortunately in this hurricane, because it took so long and people thought, "Oh, it's still safe to drive over the bridge," we actually had to put out notices to stop people from coming over to the beachside to look at the beaches. And that was an issue that we had to discuss through EOC and put out special messaging and then get, you know, assistance from the law enforcement to keep people from coming over and to stop people from going to the beach. We also had a problem with reporters walking all over the dunes, and so we had, you know, to send our police department out there to tell them to get off the dunes and to get off the beaches. So that was, you know, it was interesting, it was a better problem to have than, you know, a Cat 5 total destruction, but those are the issues that we are dealing with. You can go to the next one. And there's, all of our staff have to sleep in their offices at this point, so you'll hear a lot of that when we're talking about the new buildings that we're building with Public Works and the Fire Department. This is the beach erosion now. And this area lost about, Alan, I think, was about 25 feet, you said? A 25-foot decrease there.
That's a public?
That's the oceanana.
Okay.
And this, this is what happens when you have a seawall right next door. And so that seawall will break the waves and push the wave force to the next, to the adjacent properties, and that's what happened here. So their loss at this area was substantially worse than most other parts of the beaches. And then because we didn't get, you know, the biggest damage was the beach, you know, Liz worked with KBB to organize this, you know, the Fire Department was out there, a lot of the council members were there, and then Public Works was there. We actually also had, you can go to the next one. We had, I, it was interesting, because we only had like 24 hours to really publicize this, and it was busy. We were busy all day. I thought I could go home after a couple hours. I was there until bitter end. Go to the next one. And so you could see all the staff worked all day boxing this. You had to group all of the supplies into groups and label the boxes. You can go to the next one. And people were here from 8:00 in the morning, and we got done about 4:00 in the afternoon. So after working for five days, basically 24 hours a day, all the staff was back here on Saturday during this. You can go to the next one. And we filled that entire truck. The whole initiative was with KBB had five locations? Five locations across the county. We were one. They got 25,000 items, and we were 10,000 of them. So that just shows the generosity of the Satellite Beach community. You can go to the next one. And so you could see it's already, it was packed when they left. And of course, you can't have, you can't do all this all day long without having some fun, you know. You can go to the next one. And then we also had, so you can see a lot of the, there's, Councilwoman Gibson is there. I know Councilwoman Rizicky was there. So there is a lot of, you know, Dominic, Councilwoman Dominic Montanaro was there. So go ahead to the next one. Alan never lets us take a picture, but we did get it. So he's right there. We circled it and made sure that he knows that we, he cannot escape our cameras. You can go to the next one. And then the 9/20th came out, and we have a great relationship with the 9/20th, but we didn't even ask them to come out. They just saw that we were doing it, and they came over and volunteered all day long. They were there all day. So that was pretty neat. So we just want to thank you all for your support. We had, you know, it's a hard time for us because we're just, we're here the whole time. And, but it was a great ending, because we didn't have any damage except for the beach, and that was pretty incredible. We only had two beach accesses in the very end that we had to close. So we were, we were very much feeling very fortunate at this point. And I think that's it. I wanted to just, you know, when we, when I went to this conference, I had the opportunity to tour city of Panama City, and then also get a presentation and speak with the city manager of Mexico Beach. And there's a lot of lessons there. So we are trying to arrange some meetings with them to go through that, and we are looking at updating our emergency management plan with a lot of the information that we not only learned with this hurricane, but also from some of the pretty major disasters that have already occurred. And there are some things that they encountered that you just don't even, wouldn't really think about. Also during this period of time, there's, we realized, and so did Indian Harbor Beach's city manager, that there's a lot of other things that we could coordinate with and share costs with, particularly, you know, equipment and, you know, post-recovery equipment and things like that. So we are going to be meeting with the Barrier Islands, coming up with just the Barrier Islands, and then also the Director of Emergency Management with the county to start talking about how we can start doing that. A lot of the impacts in the hurricanes hit the Barrier Islands the most, so we want to make sure that we have, you know, a plan in place and that we're coordinating as best as we can. And, you know, just, you know, using our resources together. So we're going to be looking at that in the near future. Before I move on from the hurricane, do you have any questions on that?
One question, Courtney. When do we plan on redoing the Civic Center here?
We are wrapping up the plans right now, the bid documents, and we're hoping to go to bid next week, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, at the end of the month.
So is this something that could be complete by next hurricane season?
Yeah, it will be.
Okay. The only reason I say that is, if it was something that was a year off or two years off, a stove can't cost that much. And knowing how many people that go through there throughout the day, and stove doesn't work.
Right.
So, I mean, if it was something that was going to be more than a year, my recommendation is put a stove in there till, you know.
Yeah, we, we'll, we should have it constructed by then. Is there, did you have anything? Okay. And I just wanted to let you know also, we do have an Alzheimer's Walk on Saturday that we, I think we gave out flyers for you. That's for former County Commissioner Nancy Higgs, and Liz has been organizing that as well. Liz actually worked for her for many years, so, so we'll be doing that on Saturday, and that's located at the Cocoa Village. And then also, not really an action item, but we are looking into putting together a consent form of an agenda for you. We were looking at your October 2nd meeting, and we've got a lot of stuff on that meeting because we had to postpone so much, you know. So we will be looking at, we might try it out at your next meeting to see if you like it. And that would be, so we would group the agenda and have a consent section. So if there's things like a reoccurring contract that you see every year, like school resource officers, or, you know, very easy things that, you know, never really garner any discussion, we'll group those into consent. And if you have any questions, or a community member wants to talk about them, you would just pull them off consent and then vote on them as a block. And so that's done in most cities. We just never really done it in this city because our agendas aren't that big. But they are getting bigger, and it would allow us to put more things on the agenda and not have to wait because we're not wanting to crowd up your agendas. So it would let us work well, but more efficiently and faster for you. So we might try that for you, and if you don't like it, we can always go back to what we were always doing. So I wanted to make sure that you knew that, instead of when you see the agenda, you don't go, "What are you doing?" So, and that's, that's basically all I got for the next.
Any other questions? No. Thank you, Courtney. Okay, before we move on to Agenda Item 7, Agenda Item 9, which is Ordinance 1175, is stricken from the council packet. It was brought to us at a later date. So number nine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, at this time, move on to Agenda Item 7, Discuss, Take Action on Resolution 1018. Jim?
Resolution number 1018, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, in support of Florida Senator Debbie Mayfield's efforts to ensure the safety of all passenger rail systems in Florida by encouraging the governor and Florida Department of Transportation to fulfill the recommendations within the Office of Public Policy and Government Accountability Study Regarding Passenger Rail, providing an effective date. That's a reading of Resolution Number 1018.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Resolution Number 1018.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer.
I can say second.
Second by Councilman Rizicky. Discussion from council, pretty straightforward. At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 7. Here or none, back to council. Any further from council?
Just checking to make sure that was a motion or a motion.
Thank you.
Just making sure.
God, at least we can laugh.
Councilman Rizicky?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Tina?
Yes, motion passes.
It's always at your expense.
I know. I love it.
Probably to make sure.
Okay. At this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item 8, and at this time, I'm going to open up a public hearing for your 2019-2020 budget. And the first part of it would be Ordinance Number 1173. And the first part of it would be Ordinance number 1173. Jim?
Ordinance number 1173, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad lorem taxes by establishing an operating millage rate of 8.7 mils for fiscal year 2019-2020, providing an effective date. And that's the first reading of Ordinance number 1173. And there's a revised ordinance at the counter.
Yeah, this is this one here.
There is a typo in the millage rate.
It just revised the second sentence or the second line in Section 2.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance number 1173 on first reading in the revised edition.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Rozicki. Further discussion from council? Here are none at this time. Open up for public comment on this agenda item and Ordinance 1173.
I don't, Diane Douglas. I don't know if this question goes here or somewhere else. But I was looking at the Brevard County millage rate thing, you know, like you look and you say part goes to library and part goes to the city. Now, if just part goes to the city, is that the only part that's raising to the 8.7? All the other things are staying the same. Is that correct, on my understanding?
I don't know what the other count, the county is doing, but our city would only be the city portion of that tax notice you got in the mail.
Perfect. Thank you, Liz. Clarifies it.
Thank you. Floor still open? Here are no further public comment. Back to council for council comments. Any further?
Councilwoman Rozicki?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to Part C, Ordinance 1174.
Ordinance number 1174, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, adopting FY 2019-2020 budget, providing an effective date. That's the first reading of Ordinance number 1174.
Thank you. Comments from council?
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance number 1174 on first reading.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Breimer.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Rozicki. Any further comment or input from staff? Here are none. Open up for public comment on Part C, Ordinance 1174. Here are none. Bring it back to council further.
May I ask one clarification question? I wrote it in the last budget, and then we turned it back in, so I don't have my notes again. The debt that we have out, can you remind me, the 2018 utility tax note, was that Roosevelt?
No, that was a refinancing of several other.
Okay.
Yeah.
And 2015?
That was the Roosevelt.
That's Roosevelt. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's my only question.
Councilwoman Rozicki?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, staff, everybody. Thank you very much for your hard work on it. Appreciate it. Moving on to, remember Agenda Item 9, we canceled, so we're going to move on to Agenda Item 10, which is Ordinance 1176.
Ordinance number 1176, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Section 30-424 Sub A Sub 4. Purpose: Creating a new Section 30-424 Sub C Sub 4, Satellite Beach City Code. Establishing maximum allowable parking for non-residential uses. Providing per sevability, providing an effective date. That's the first reading of Ordinance number 1176, and there's a revised ordinance also.
Okay. Thank you.
So Mayor, we're going to allow Chase Bennett, our intern who prepared this ordinance and worked, you know, basically did all the research for it, so he's going to present this tonight.
Great, Chase, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. Thanks. So currently, the city does not limit the amount of parking that developers can create. This ordinance would create a 100%, 120% maximum, or an additional 20% increase in the amount of permitted parking over the minimum. And this is specifically paved parking. This would not limit the impervious parking, such as gravel or, yeah, gravel. This has great implications for the environment. Impervious surface area creates problems with runoff as water cannot percolate or filter through the soil, creating pollution and runoff into Indian River Lagoon. This ordinance would limit the impervious surface area, creating benefits for the environment.
Great. Any questions?
Yes, I'll ask a couple of questions. This is for any new development from this point forward, correct?
Yes, yes.
So somebody presently would not need to change their parking?
Correct.
Okay?
No, I have none. At this time, I'll open this up for public comment on this agenda item.
Diane Douglas, just, it's a silly question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So if a developer wanted to make, you know, like put down pavers or something for parking, then he could just make as much as he wanted to then?
As long as the surface is pervious.
Pervious. Oh, okay. Pavers are not pervious.
They're not pervious, though, no.
Oh, pavers are, they don't let the water go through.
A little bit more than, than pay, than concrete, but not much.
Oh, all right.
We have a law in our, in our code that allows you to have 10% more impervious by using pavers than if you would use concrete.
Oh, all right. Oh, good to know.
So, so when they do impervious parking areas, that would, there would be things like grass crete or, you know, or just grass. So grass with parking stalls can be done too. You know, you can do some stabilized gravel that's a little bit more, has more percolation. But the minute you start stabilizing a surface, it's, it starts preventing percolation.
Okay. Any further public? Here are none. Back to council. A motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Ordinance number 1176.
I have a motion by council.
As revised, as revised.
Revised ordinance.
Just to clarify, John brought a great addition to, and that's what we have passed out, was his suggestion to add the word paved throughout. And so it clarified that it was really applied to paved parking, which is basically what we're do, we're talking about. So we just wanted to add that on.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Rozicki, I have a second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion from council or staff? Here are none.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rozicki?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you very much for the work you did, Honor. Appreciate it. Move on to Agenda Item 11. Discuss, take action on establishing of an ad hoc employee care committee. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. Alexis helped me put together this agenda item, so if I get stuck, she's going to have to come up here and help me. But basically, what we are noticing is we have workers' comp issues that are coming up that we were just foreseeing. And, you know, that, those are some of the things that we need to keep a lookout for and make sure that we're maintaining the best practices to prevent workers' comp issues. And it's not just because we don't want to spend money on workers' comp, it's because we want to make sure our employees stay safe. The first is PTSD among the emergency management departments particularly. That issue seems to be coming down the line, I think particularly more that, you know, mental health issues are becoming more acceptable to speak about, socially acceptable to speak about and, and address. And you see that being addressed more and more in emergency management departments. And we want to make sure that we have adequate care for that, for those issues. And those are, you know, when we're looking at what we now provide, it's gotten better, but I think there's some relatively inexpensive ways to address some of those issues. And so we thought that the employees coming together and kind of creating some recommendations to us, we could put together some better programs for that, to address that. And I think we're going to see those issues come up a lot more through our union negotiations as well. So we want to make sure that we're prepared for that. The other issue is the, the issue of heat-related illnesses and heat-related issues in both all of the margins, any department that works outside. We have it in rec, primarily Public Works, and then, you know, both Police and Fire. And, you know, best management practices can be anywhere from required breaks. We need to do training on how to spot illnesses in heat exhaustion and what to do to respond to that until first responders get there. We have, you know, issues arising, can we make them work earlier? And, you know, we can't really do that with Public Works because we would need to change ordinances because you can't mow the lawns before seven. So there's, it, you think they're easy, but they're a lot bigger than, than they, they seem. So we want to put everyone together and start coming up with some policies and procedures regarding that. The second is that we have made some great strides in affordability with our healthcare plan. However, with that comes complaints with employees, and we're getting those now. So I'd like to get the employees together to talk about that as well and see if we can fix some of those issues. So that, we hope to accomplish this in six months. If we do not, if we, if we are successful, we may be able to keep this committee from now on. Because I think those, you know, we, we have tried really hard as a city to do things with our employees and not for them, so to make sure they're involved in those decisions. So we, this, you know, may be a good formal avenue for them to do that. What we'd like to do is, is to include, have an 11-member board with three citizens. And I think when you have the citizens there, you bring in a private sector perspective, you also bring in affordability perspective, making sure that, you know, we keep things in check with, you know, costs and things like that. And then you, you know, what is the public's perception of these solutions, you know, and that, so we want to bring that perspective in. And then we want two retirees, and we thought that would be good because they have the experience of having to address, you know, retirement, and, you know, they, you know, have, have been here for a long time. They know what we've done, how we've done things in the past and so on. And then also, one employee from each city department, and so the department heads would, you know, basically recommend somebody to be able to sit on that team. So if we can do that, we would like to bring back, go ahead and advertise the ad hoc committee and bring that back for you to appoint those members, hopefully on October 2nd. I did hire an intern specifically to help do the research behind this, so that, we have that extra assistance to do, you know, we're basically reaching out to other communities and other private sector employers that work outside a lot to see, you know, what they've been doing and start gathering best management practice information. So with that, we are hoping to get your support in, in creating this committee.
Thank you. Courtney, question concerning time. When it does our healthcare insurance come due for renewal? What time each year?
It's about June.
So hopefully, we would be done with this, well?
Yep.
That seems to be as big a part of it as?
Healthcare is always a part, a big issue.
Right.
Because we're always trying to keep costs low, and so are they, because they have to pay for half of it if you have spouse or, or dependent coverage. But, you know, at the same time, we went from a plan, we've, we've slowly kind of eroded some of those benefits, and that's starting to show. And I think you're, you know, we're starting to see the backlash of that. And so I think, you know, when, when they're involved and they understand the costs and things like that, they, we get pretty good solutions, I think.
I just want to make sure, because that is critical important to them, to us, because of cost, that we're far enough in front of the June date so that we can shop it and add or direct what we need to in that.
Right.
So this will give us that time, you feel, with the six months?
Yeah. I mean, if they, we were thinking about it two, two meetings a month, so kind of a fast pace.
Okay.
It's hard to meet once a month on something this big because you have, it's, it's very detailed and complicated issues, so if you're not meeting all the time, you forget and there's a lag. So we're going to try to do two times a month.
Okay. I, I'd like to see it done so that we're not struggling at the end when we shop the healthcare.
Right.
Mark?
Hey, Courtney, just a couple of questions. If this is put together, and I think it's a really good idea, would you think not, not reduce, everybody's looking to reduce, would you think this would, might help stabilize our workers' comp costs?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's good. That would be, that would be in my mind just a success if you could stabilize it, not reduce it, but just stabilize it.
And we had a pretty bad year, the past year.
Well, that, now, that's my second thing. When you start just kind of talking about the heat, and I'm just throwing this out there for your committee, you may have to kind of look at stratifying who's out in the heat according to age, times, and ranges and that sort of thing, because it's different than, it's different for somebody who's 26-years-old versus 56. So you may have to kind of play with those numbers a little bit on heat exhaustion. The other part that fits into that heat thing that will be greatly accelerated would be pre-existing illnesses would be in that as well. So if you factor in, factor in somebody 56 in the heat with a pre-existing illness of diabetes or something along that line, their reaction's going to be accelerated versus a 26-year-old. But it's just, I guess what I'm saying is, is your committee can really stratify, looking at what the difference is, and they're all over the internet or wherever you want to talk to. But you could probably, if you could find a family practice, general practice, something type, or even an ED doc, what's his name? The one that we always had with, oh, McPherson, yeah.
Our medical director?
Yeah. That might be a good one to just pull in because they deal with that stuff all the time. So you could kind of, it might save you some data time is what I'm thinking. I think it's a good idea. Any other?
Great, thank you. Anything else? Okay, at this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item 11.
I don't know anything, Diane Douglas, but I do know the material of the clothes out in the sun is huge, huge, huge. I cannot stress that enough. Synthetic fibers, you know, got that cool wicking supposedly and all that, but you have to go with natural fibers. Long sleeves, cover up. You got to keep the heat off. There's a big, huge difference. Yeah, so I just wanted to let you know, indifferent between a straw hat and a paper hat and all that. Cotton. Yeah, so that's my two cents. Thank you. I like, I like silk. I like linen. Yeah, cotton. Yeah. Rayon.
Public Works guys in silk shirts.
Yeah, long sleeves. White, yes. Silk shirts, perfect, perfect. You sweat, wind blows, it dries it, you sweat again. It's, it's the ultimate cool wicking. So, yeah. Okay. You're welcome.
Public comments still open? Here are no further public comment. Back to council. And this is the item.
The other thing I was thinking about, Courtney, is, is, I don't know what that, what's out there with the Florida League of Cities. Guessing not a whole lot, but my point is, is if you do this right, it could be a benchmark for them. It could really kind of set us out there if you did, because there'll be thousands of people that'll tear apart whatever you come up with, but at least it's a starting point type of thing, so.
Well, we had, you know, when, when we do a lot of climate presentations about our work here, that's one of the things that I've noticed in the climate presentation or climate, what people are addressing, or cities are addressing, it's always water and flooding. But the heat is something that people aren't really looking at very much. And I think this year was a year where people in Public Works were just, it just worn out with the heat. And it was clear and evident that that, it really was hard on them this year. So that's really what spurred this, was just listening to them talk, and it was, you know, it's been hard on them.
To me, I think you've got two things. Obviously, there's, like I said, the stabilizing the workers' comp, but then, on the broader side, that could be applicable to a lot of cities and a lot of places. So you've got two things going there. So, I mean, it's just, you can't blend the two. They'd be figured different. But I think it's a good concept, really good concept. concept, really good concept. It's a matter of getting the right people on there that can really give you the data you need to make those pseudo-informed decision type of things. So.
May I ask one question? The, the three citizens that would be appointed by city council, would they apply?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll advertise it tomorrow and see if we can get, you know, some applicants to.
And then they could be interviewed at the first meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I think something I read the other day, it was like 110 straight days and 92 are.
Correct.
Days of summer, which is pretty amazing since it was the hottest July on record. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
A motion by Vice Mayor Breimer.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Rozicki. Further comment from council or staff?
Councilwoman Rozicki?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Mayor Cattina?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Courtney, for putting it together. The next one is the proposed agenda for next meeting. Obviously, if we get these applicants in, we'll have a, a meeting and interview board applicants at 6:30-ish. And then our regular meeting on the second. So please look at your agenda here. If there's anything you would like to see added or questions on it, please get with Courtney. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, the approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting on August 21st, 2019.
And I have a motion by Councilwoman Rozicki, second by Vice Mayor Breimer. Further discussion?
I don't know if you, if you want to have your, you got the special meeting. Did you capture special? Do you want to capture them at the same time?
You can just capture them at the same time. If you amend your motion to include that.
I will amend my motion to include the minutes from the city council's special meeting on August 21st.
And here's the unapproved on the 29th.
And August 29th.
Great.
29th.
I'll amend my second.
Thank you. Further discussion? Quinn?
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rozicki?
Yes.
Mayor Cattina?
Yes, motion passes. Any further business before council? Staff, thank you very much for your hard work. I know we missed the last meeting because of a hurricane, but a lot of work done. And so thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned.